I need a motion to come out of recess.
Some move?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good morning, and welcome to the Gates County Board of Education. I mean, it's on my mind this morning, Gates County for the Commissioners special meeting. We recessed yesterday. We have a special guest with us this morning, Mr. Rodney Tartt of Green Engineering, and I'm gonna call him forth. The first thing on the agenda is the Gates County capital improvement for the public utilities department. Mr. Tartt?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Rodney Tartt of Green Engineering. In my first life, I operated managed water systems. Thank you for allowing me to come up today and explain some of this to you. I think the manager's given y'all a capital improvement plan.
Yes, sir.
And this is a ten-year capital improvement plan, and we have missed it, and you have to adopt projects for it to be considered when you're applying for funds from the state of North Carolina. And most funding agencies now are going to that. Now, on my chart, I've got it highlighted in color, but I'll just call it out, I'll call it out to you. The, I'm gonna go over one of the projects is, I should've put a number down these things, but the water tank replacement is 1.4 million, and that's the highest-scoring application you got, and it's got a good chance of probably getting funded. And then, the next highest chance one you got is the wastewater treatment plant, the old wastewater treatment plant, is called WWTP Plant Equipment Replacements and Rehab, that's $2.3 million. Those are your two highest-scoring projects. And then, the third project, I'm including five other items in it, that, and that total project, I'll go over that just a moment with you. But if you'll notice that, you'll notice that this capital improvement plan from the top, from left to right, it goes through ten years. Now, this is a plan. It doesn't mean that you're gonna do everything on there. That never means, that never gets serious until you're a finance officer, and the county manager prepares what's called a project ordinance. So if you get funds, or if you take funds from your residual returns on your, on your water bill collections, then you do a project ordinance, and at that point, if this board adopts a project ordinance, it then becomes an official project, and you build it. The purpose of this CIP is for two things. Number one, for Brad and the county manager to plan capital projects that, that need to be planned to improve your water system. That's the primary purpose of that. And then, secondly, as you move through each year, something that you may have as a high priority, you may move it over a year or two, and you may, you may move something out here and move it closer to the year you're operating in because of the sense of urgency for it. Now, we're gonna be applying for about $300,000 worth of grant for you in the fall, and those are called asset inventory, and asset inventory assessment plans, and that money is free, and you've got, you've got a pretty good chance of getting that because you are a distressed county. You're recognized as a distressed water system, and there's about 108 of those across the state. So you're gonna get that money. Once we get that money, then we'll go in and do a more detailed assessment of all your assets, and then, once that's done, some of these projects may move in its priority, and it may, some may get deleted for right now, and some that we don't even know about may be added to it. So that's, that's the purpose of that. So for the purpose of approving this, Madam Chair, members of the board, is that it's required to be funding applications, and it's also required that our good clerk provide an excerpt of minutes of the motion when it's taken, and then the clerk will certify those minutes, and then that goes in the application. And that tells, that tells the grant loaner viewers that Gates County is serious about what they're doing about the water system. That's, that's what they're meant. So I would, I would give that back to you, Madam Chair, with to take some action on there.
Okay, you've heard the presentation by Mr. Tartt. Are there any questions before we move forward with the resolution? I hear no questions. I'm looking at the clerk.
Mr. Tartt, are you asking?
Yes, I believe he's asking.
About permitting that they make a motion to approve this?
Yes, please.
So you need a motion to approve.
Mm-hmm. I have no questions. Okay. I request, is the motion on the floor to approve the capi, the capital improvement plan for Gates County?
Some leave.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any mayes? Motion approved.
Okay, the next item we want to talk about is you've got, you've got three papers that look like this. These are best, kind of, y'all at the top. There's three projects there that we're applying for. The first one and the highest-scoring one is the water tank replacement here in Gatesville, and it's for 1.39 million, 600,000, and we put 1.4 just to round it off, and the CIP just approved. This point scores the highest, and then Brad told me this morning, we've been urging, and he's been very diligent on getting a wellhead protection plan approved by the North Carolina Water Association. They prepared the plan, and it's getting submitted to the state public water supply division of the Department of Environmental Quality. And hopefully, if they can get that approved before May of, first, we will include that in this funding application, and that's gonna give you five more points, and that raises your score. And we're gonna, we're gonna cover that in more detail in a minute, so you know what it is. So the Gatesville water tank is the first one. The second one is the lowest-scoring one, and that's called water system improvements. And I'll explain why it is the lowest-scoring one, but there's, the highest priority in that budget of 2.6 is putting in a new well in the Gatesville area, and I'll explain why that's important. In this project, we were gonna put in, we were gonna put in a new well, we were gonna put in standby power in all you existing wells up in the northwest area of the county. We were gonna make some improvements on the scale, we were gonna make some chemical feed treatments at the water plant, we were gonna replace your zone valve up here above Sunberry, and the last thing is we were gonna put a hole in a vintage creek and close that, so you've got a loop system that'll improve fire flow and water quality. So that, that's that project. And then, the last project is the 2.2 million, which is the wastewater treatment plant, the original wastewater treatment plant that was initially the North Carolina Department of Corrections, which then was gifted over to the, to the county, and now you're using it to provide sewer services to your schools in that community out in that area. We are going to reapply again for a pre-construction planning grant of about $400,000 this fall to look and evaluate the Gatesville community, and do a feasibility study on what it would take to put a central sewer in this community. I don't even think there's enough repair here for the courthouse. If you have a sewer bay here, I don't even know if you could do a repair to make that work, so we're, we're going to do that. But that project, that, the sewer plant project has got a good likelihood it could get funded, so we're hopeful on that. The way that works, folks, is you've got four, 500 communities applying for grants and loans, and depending on the degree of importance in their environmental issues that that project addresses, there are points issued for that, and that's how the competitiveness comes into it. And I'm gonna explain that when I show you the scoring sheet here in just a moment. This is a matter of information. There's no action to take on this at this time, but it's just a matter of information. Okay, I'm going to move next to a handout I gave you. It looks like this. It's a, it's a one-page, and it's got three wells on it. The reason this is important is that you have three existing wells in the county, and they're all within, less than a mile of each other, up on what we call a water plant road. Okay, the largest well you've got there is well number three, and if you'll look over to the far right where it says 12-hour supply, okay, well one's 277,000 a day, well two is 390,000 a day, and well three would do 770,000 a day if it runs 12 hours. And the state regulates you to run wells no more than 12 hours a day. Wells have to rest, and so that's the reason of that. My point of importance and urgency here is, is that if you lost well three for any mechanical reason, especially in the high demand period of, of the season, then you're down to 667,000. I wrote that in red. It's in the paragraph, but I drew a line down. I wrote that in red. 667,000 gallons is all you've got, and on an average day, if you look at the middle column, a column where it says total of 925,000, that's what your average day usage is right now. So if you lost well three, it's sad scene to slow up until you get something put back together, and you just don't get well pumps and all put back together overnight. So we, we see the urgency of you planning for another well, and I think it would be good to put one down in this area, especially if we get the tank replaced and get it backed up on, in service. So I wanna point that out to you, and that's the reason we're trying for that. So that, so that's very important. Okay, is there any questions on that? That's, that's just for information. There's no action needs to be taken on that because that, that well requirement is in your CIP, and it is in one of the applications where I give you the budget to be, to be initiated.
Mr. Tartt?
If we get funded. Okay.
Manager, manager, I have a question from Mr. Tartt.
Yes, I'm sure.
Mr. Tartt, well, three, what is the current status of this functional, functionality? Well, what's the status of, current status of well three?
What's the status of the well three?
Yes.
I cannot tell you exactly. I'd have to lean to Brad because we haven't done an assessment on that well, but anything can happen. And since that's your highest, that's your highest-yielding well, if it mechanically goes down or whatever, then you can't meet your daily demand. That's, that's the important of it.
Yes.
I don't even know when that well was developed yet. We'll get into that when we do our full assessment. But if you've got this kind of demand, and if every well is running, you're right there on the borderline already, so it's calling for you for the need of a fourth well.
Yes.
And it would be good if we could get it back down in this area of the county, because all of them are set. Just think that there was some kind of environmental contamination to occur up there, and that, and that underground plume of pollution would get into that, into that aquifer up there. What that would do, it would shut you down. So spreading those wells out is just a good plan, too. If we find the water in the right places, is to spread those wells around and let them pump in. We'll put treatment on this well at the well site. It will not have to be pumped back up to the water plant where it is now.
In event that we do get a fourth well, what is the timeline from, you know, completion? From beginning to installation to completion?
Okay. Well, design and construction, probably everything 12 months.
12 months.
For well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tartt.
Yes, sir.
I can ask, Mr. Tartt, can you identify, do we have emergency connections if we were to be in a situation to need an alternative source from another adjacent county?
You do have one connection with.
Chawan.
Chawan County, but we haven't looked, we haven't looked at that. Nobody's really studied that to see to how much benefit we can get out of it based on their tank overflow elevation and what your highest tanks are. So it may be limited to where if we can feed water into it. We haven't even looked at that yet. We can't do that till we, till we do a hydraulic model and make a full better assessment. Brad has some pressure issues in the system now, and that needs to be, that needs to be evaluated, and that needs to be a study independent of everything else that we're doing. But you do have an interconnection. To what extent it's benefits to the county, I can't, I cannot attest to that right now.
And I'd just like to interject, and I'm so thankful that y'all were willing to come back today during a morning meeting. I know I'm a little more awake than, than late at night. The things that he has touched on help on grant scoring for the state, but they are vitally important for our operator, Mr. Arnold. The wellhead protection is just what it is, what it says. We're protecting that access to the groundwater and assuring that we take steps to, to keep that water safe. The asset inventory program, which would be grant-funded, helps us identify all of our valves, all of our connection points, and things that were installed in Gates County, we ideally would have as-built drawings, but whether it's building a school, or a firehouse, or a water system, often the as-built drawings just aren't as accurate as they need to be. So, so they will assess location and, and inventory those with actually GIS coordinates and things. But that last piece, the hydraulic study and the overall system evaluation, is where you really get a, a physical head-to-toe of what we've got in terms of life support for, for this water system, and it's, it's vitally important. When Brad mentioned to me on one of my first meetings with him that we had just three wells, that's, that's concerning when you think we've got over 4,000 connections, and those customers usually involve more than one person on, on the, on the connection, and the hydraulic, hydraulic component as well. It's my understanding that our tank in Gatesville, hydraulically is significantly lower than where it needs to be, and y'all may have already heard this, but pressure-wise, that could really create challenges for us. I don't use the term crisis, but challenge, if we don't get on top of it. So I think as we put the budget together for next year, you'll see some recommendations that we move expeditiously on that system detailed evaluation and the hydraulic modeling that needs to occur, so we can determine, is there benefit to the connection with Chawan? Do we possibly need to install a pump to push the water up this way? And again, we'll have to communicate with Chawan about their capacity. I don't know what their excess capacity might even, might even be. We've got a lot of great opportunity ahead of us. I just thank you for taking time to love us.
Let me, let me just reiterate one thing. The state of North Carolina is providing these asset inventory assessment grants because they see the importance. A lot of, a lot of small towns and, and small county water systems have not planned well for the future, and as their asset, you know, the, the normal thing is you wanna try to keep rates down as low as you can, and sometimes you can't do that if you don't know what your, what your vulnerabilities are. And so if you wait too long and you plan it, you'll have a major malfunction, and then you gotta just jack everything up high to take care of a problem, so we call that crisis management. So the asset inventory and assessment program is a very high priority for the state, and everybody's trying to do that now. And, and then, do your capital improvement plan, and then annually, your staff and your manager, they come together, and they, they do their own internal assessments, and then they come to you with recommendations on what that next higher, highest priority's gonna be to make improvements to your system. Now, you've got a system here that's over, it's bordered on about 35-plus years old now. I'm just trying to think. The Gatesville part that you've inherited, it's 52 years old. So I don't know anybody that lives in the house for 52 years that don't make improvements. And in this world we're living in right now, delivery of ass, of components that you need to operate, I mean, just, we're waiting and waiting, waiting for everything, so that makes it problematic just in the daily operation of the system. So we wanna try to keep it as, as well as we can and manage and up, and maintain so that we can prevent some of these crises to occur. Okay, next thing I wanna do, I think I saved one, I hope I did. I wanna go over the project scoring sheet. I may have given it out of the way.
Rodney, you want this?
Yes, thank you. Okay, every one of these projects has to have a scoring sheet on it, and I'm gonna show you how we come up with the points, and I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you what your, your actions are doing to help you improve. Okay, this project you got before you here, this scoring sheet is for the water tank replacement. All right, notice under 1B and 1C. Under 1B, excuse me, 1C, you get 12 points to replace or rehabilitate. 1C1, you get eight points because that water tank is greater than 40 years old. So water tanks and wells are, and water lines require to be 40 years, be 40 years old to get, to get points. Okay, so you, you got 20 points there. That's, that's, that's a good score, and that one you can only get 25. Now, the project benefits, the only thing that we could score out of that, and you see a litany of that, it goes from, it goes from 2B through 2N7, and we're, we're claiming three points under 2N7 for resilience, and we're gonna put a generator at that tank base, and we're gonna put SCADA, that's Supervising Control and Data Acquisition. This is computer-based management, electronic management, that reports the levels in the tank, tells the wells when to come on, and all that goes through the computer system, and hit, and, and Brad and his staff can access it by a smartphone, or they can, it'll go on their laptop or their desktop, it's, that, that information. And the better news on that is, is all of this information is being archived. In other words, it's being archived in real time, and so that data becomes invaluable when we do hydraulic models, or you have problems, you can go back to that time, and you can see what events happened that contributed to that malfunction, or, or crisis, or whatever. So you're gonna get three points there. That's all we're gonna be able to get out of a possible 35. All right, here is where your actions start to pay off. Okay, you got a capital improvement plan, that's two points. This year, you have an operating ratio of 1.15, meaning that, that you took in more money than you spent out, so your operating ratio is greater than one. When you spend more than you receive, you get a negative operating ratio, and you don't get no points for a negative operational ratio. So we were fortunate to get that, all right, and then, we're working and hopeful that we're gonna get the, the source water, the wellhead protection plan that Brad's been working on. If that happens, we're gonna get five more. For this application, I'm, I'm claiming three points for water conservation incentive rate, and we're gonna go through that in a minute, but you get three points if you have an increase in your rate before the fir, in the first 5,000 gallons of water that's used. Most of the people in this county probably use somewhere around 400, 4,500 gallons, the average, to have a chow. So this proposed rate increase that I want to ask you to consider in a moment, it's gonna be absolutely insignificant. The more significant increase is the one on the action you took in, in February, and I'm gonna show you how that paid off for you just a second.
And if I could, Mr. Tartt, let me jump in and just share. I know the board just changed the rate structure 30 days ago or less. The county had a couple of grant applications that were submitted back in the fall. Unfortunately, they were not successful. The state held a workshop, workshop for all grant recipients and, and funding applicants statewide. They did it by region. Mr. Arnold, Mr. Tartt spent the entire day there. I just stayed for the, the morning session. But they went through all of the scenarios where applicants were successful, but more importantly, where they were not successful, and identified areas that, that could be improved. One of the scenarios that they brought forth as a, as a recommendation is to have this conservation rate structure, which basically just adds a nickel per thousand after you hit, I think it's 8,000. Is it, that's?
Yeah, 8,000 on the bi-month, it would be 4,000 on the monthly. Right now, you're doing that because of staffing and the hardships of trying to get everything done with the staffing level you got. Hopefully, if you get your meter project launched, and you get that, and that becomes automated, we would recommend that you go back to monthly because the money that you will take in up and above your operational costs, you can get that in the bank and enjoy the interest on it 30 days earlier. But for right now, you're doing bi-monthly. So on a bi-monthly, that means you're, you're paid, you're getting two, you're getting 2,000 gallons for that flat rate of $29, and then after you've used an additional 6,000, then the nickel would, would crank in. So for the average customer, it's, it's almost seamless. To bring that down to a monthly, because that's, that's the way my mind works, you, your first thousand would be $14.5, and then the next 3,000 would be $5, like you've got the rate now. And then, the next thousand, between 4,000 and 5,000, would be $5.05. So your average bill would be $32.05 for the month for a 5,000-gallon usage of that. And I'm gonna go through that in a minute. Let's, let's stay on the focus right here. Let's go to the last page of the scoring sheet. Okay, all right, you get, you get four points because your meter base is less than 5,000 residential connections. Last year, under 4B1, 2, 3, and 4, y'all did not score any points there. When you took this rate increase in February, when you took that action, when you combined your sewer and your water bill, you now get four points for that. So that was a big, that was a big plus for you, and four points makes a difference in these applications when you're competing with the whole state. Now, what was surprising to me is on your economic factors, you were only three out of five, that's 4C1, you're only three out of five worse than the state average, and you, two of those economic factors, you were actually better than the state. You, you were doing better. You were doing better than the state average. And one of those, the state average median household income is just under 44,000 and y'all are a little over 45,000. So we contribute that to the outmigration you've got of people working outside the county and getting those higher salaries. And that brings your median household income up. So, but you got, you got, you got three points for three out of, three out of five. So the water tank project you're looking at right here, right now, is sitting on 44 points if y'all approve the conservation rating incentive this morning. And then if Brad's able to get the wellhead protection plan approved, then we'll go to 49 and you're in hot-striking distances. Normally, about 50 points is a very, very competitive application. So with that, Madam Chairman, is there any questions on this first before I move from this? But I just thought I'd spend the time to show you how these points are derived at and how actions that y'all take can make an impact on the scoring and the competitiveness of the application. All right, here are no questions, then I'm going to move on to the rate. The rates on this page right here are the same as they were before with exception to the conservation piece of it. Let's review that. Okay, in February, your water rates is the first, is the first two lines. You went from $24 to $29, flat rate, and you're giving them 2,000 gallons for over two months. If you break that down, that's 1,000 gallons a month. And 1,000 gallons a month would be $14.50, where it was $12 for that. You went from $3 a thousand to $5 a thousand. The state, when you do these applications, they require that you do the computation based on a 5,000 gallon consumption. That way, everybody's treated the same and those numbers go into a database and it's benchmarked. So if you use 5,000 gallons under the current rate that was approved in February, that took effect April 1. So if you use 5,000 gallons, that would be the first two, I'm going to break this down on a monthly basis. My head just won't lie through that without using paper. Okay, so if, on a monthly basis, if you use 5,000 gallons, the first thousand's in the $14.50, okay? And then the next 3,000 is another $15. So you've got 15 plus $14.50, that puts you at $29.50. Is that correct?
Yes.
Doing the math with me? Then we kick in, then the next, the next thousand is $5 and it puts you.
505.
Sir?
505, right?
505. Okay, well, I'm looking at the conservation right now, okay? That's the second one down. And I'm doing it on a monthly basis. Ask a question, I don't want to confuse nobody because it can get confusing. Is everybody with me?
So far.
My mother always says, he who asks a question is a fool for five minutes and he who don't may be a fool five minutes. So I like to ask questions, embarrass myself so others can learn. So right now, right now, 5,000 gallons as it is, right this moment, 5,000 gallons is, on a monthly basis, is $14.50 times four times 20. 5,000 gallons on a monthly basis is the first thousand is $14.50 and the next 4,000 is 20. So that puts you at 34.50. Okay, on the conservative, on the conservation route, the first thousand is $14.50, the next 3,000 is $15, that takes you to 29.50. And then the next thousand is $5.05, which takes you to 34.55. So it costs you a nickel more. Does that make sense?
This nickel.
Sir?
And this one, this nickel will get us more.
The name of the game is, is you've got to have a rate change and it's got to be higher in the first 5,000 gallons and it can't get no lower for the next 20,000. So once, once you hit the 505 in Gates County, it's 505 no matter how much you use. So that makes you qualify for it. Now, I would say the next time you do a rate increase, you bump it another nickel or another 15 cents. Just bump that a little bit, not a lot, just keep bumping.
And administratively, we will have to go through another public hearing. So we will be setting up for a public hearing on the 19th for the sole purpose of adding the conservation component, that extra five cents. We'll go through this again as a public hearing, but we'll have that on the 19th.
I think I saw that in the paper. Have you already, Madam Clerk?
Not yet.
Not yet? I saw something, I knew it in another county, I was reading something.
Because a lot of jurisdictions are going through the same exercise. So I think it would be appropriate if the board would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for April 19th so that we could present this formally.
Is the 19th a regular column meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to make a motion?
Can you do it now, sir? I need a motion to set a public hearing on April 19th, 2023 for.
Conservation.
Conservation incentive rate.
And you go do the resolution at that time?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I may, I move second.
Then properly move in second. All in favor? Do I have any names? Motion approved.
And as I understand, the application deadline's May 1st.
May 1st, if you want to get all this in by the 27th, that's our schedule right now.
Did you say May 7th or 2nd?
27th is our internal deadline.
April 27th.
That concludes my comments, Madam Chairman.
Any questions before Mr. Tark takes his seat?
I would just say you've got a strong team in Mr. Arnold and Mr. Tark in what they're trying to do. And I think Brad's got more than he can say grace over on any given day with some of the challenges that we have with an aging system.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tark. The next is a resolution for state water infrastructure and state revolving loan fund capital projects. This required action of the board. The resolution for state water infrastructure and state revolving loan fund capital projects?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and do this because this is just the application, this is the application resolution. They'll do another resolution for the rate change. So this, yes, thank you for correcting.
Please, yeah, approve the funding resolution.
All right.
In the funding resolution, in the first, where I asked, the state requires that the board enumerate, list those projects that you're approving. You're doing the water tank replacement, you're doing water system improvements, and you're doing the wastewater treatment, plant rehab. And we went over all three of those budgets while we go, so you know what those are. And you're authorizing Brad to be the authorized person to decide the application.
That's correct. Madam Clerk, this first resolution in our packet, it's just the one Madam Clerk and county manager. Okay, the first resolution's in your packet, resolution by governing body of applicant. Make sure you, make sure everybody's ready. Whereas the county of Gates intends to request state loan or and/or grant assistance for the project, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Gates Water Utilities System. At Gates County, the applicant will arrange financing for all remaining cost of the project if approved for a state loan or and/or grant award. That the applicant will provide for efficient operation and maintenance of the project on completion or construction thereof. That the applicant will adopt and place into effect on or before completion of the project a schedule of fees and charges and other available funds, which will provide adequate funds for proper operation, maintenance, and administration of the system and repayment of all principal and interest on the debt. That the governing body of the applicant agrees to include in the loan agreement a provision authorizing the state treasurer upon failure of Gates County, the County of Gates, to make a scheduled repayment of the loan to withhold from the County of Gates any state funds that would authorize be distributed to the local government unit in an amount sufficient to pay all sums then due and payable to the state as repayment of the loan. That Jonathan B. Arnold, Public Utilities Director, the authorized representative and successor so titled, is hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant with the state of North Carolina for a loan and/or grant to aid in the study of or construction of the project described above. That the authorized representative and successor so titled is hereby authorized and directed to furnish such information as the appropriate state agency may request in connection with such an application or the project to make the assurances as contained above and to execute such other documents as may be required in connection with the application and that the applicant has substantially complied or will substantially comply with all federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, ordinances, and funding conditions applicable to the project and to the federal and state grants and loans pertaining thereof. Any questions? Making sure this is right. Madam Clerk?
I need a motion. Motion to approve the resolution for state water infrastructure and state loan funding capital project. Separate.
That's correct. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor? Any names? Motion pass.
And clerk will certify that resolution, will accompany the resolution there. I just wanted to say one more thing. We've mentioned it, but we're encouraging, and Brad has requested it, to do a hydraulic model system so we can evaluate where the problems are in regard to your pressure issues. And out of that may come a project. Out of that may be, once we do the asset survey, we may find that you've got some valves that are being climbed up. We've got to find a lot of that stuff. But a hydraulic model is paramount of importance and we would hope that the board would approve that in their budget that's coming up. And the other thing is, if you noticed, I referred to a while ago, an asset management plan. What's these AIA's? We'd like to go ahead and start an asset management plan process. So that gets you 10 points on these applications. And I encourage our clients to do everything you can do from a management standpoint to maximize the points that you can get. Then you've done your part and then the project itself will score its own self. But you've got to do your part on the management end. And these things cost money, but it's a good planning tool for the staff and it helps you, it helps you manage better and it gets you points. Because right now, the state funding process is very, very competitive. So you've got to do everything that y'all can do on your end to maximize that section for your management, to maximize the points you can get. And this is one way to do it.
Okay, any questions about, Mr. Tark, you understand the seriousness of this, that we act as a board? I've said it before, the county manager needs approval before he can do anything. And so as we sit, as we sit here today and listen to this presentation, it was very timely as far as trying to get us in position to score well so we can get some of these projects approved and moved on, so we can get our water and wastewater repaired once and for all, not once and for all, but in a, in a way that we can move on with maintenance instead of fix, fix, fix. So do you need anything else from us today?
Just a smile and happy.
Thank you, Mr. Tark. Thank you, Mr. Tark.
As the Dr. Chairman here has quizzed, probably had this product, the most exciting time of the whole year is the, is the true meaning behind Easter.
Yes, it is.
And I'm not even going to look at any Easter eggs this year. I want to attend the hunt, but I'm not going to.
You're going to attend the hunt, okay.
I hope they'll eat some hot dogs after they do the fight.
Thank you, Mr. Tark. It's always a pleasure talking with you, speaking with you. He got everything he needs? I'm making sure, I'm making sure, okay? I would also like to wish everybody a happy Easter and safe Easter weekend as we go from this place. And thank, I want to thank the board members for coming this morning early after last night and the county manager and the clerk and Warren, our tech over there for coming in this morning and of course, for those who attended the meeting. Mr. Brian, would you stand up? Mr. Brian, this, he's going to, this is Commissioner Roundtree's grandson. And so he's babysitting today. Thank you, Mr. Brian, for not disturbing the meeting. We are adjourned.